Call to order anytime you're ready.
So, um, all right. Is everybody that's gonna be here gonna be here? Are they there?
I believe so.
We'll call to order the, uh, a meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee. Uh, it is the 26th of June. Uh, this is a remote meeting. Everything will be done remote. The Chair, Brian Layton, is not here, and so I will be acting as Chair for the meeting today. Um, there is a preamble that we are obligated to read by law, and because I cannot get my account to work, Dr. Burnham will read it and insert the word "Chair" where it should have been something I say.
Happy to do that. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mr. Brian Layton, not joining us this evening. Vice Chair, Mr. Anthony Schoenbrini.
Present.
Secretary, Ms. Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Mr. Peter Beadmore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozowski.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Courtney Fuller.
Yes.
Athletic Director, Mr. Kevin Bigelow.
Yes.
Athletic Trainer, Mr. Dave Abraham.
Yes.
We have this evening a guest presenter, Dr. David Ridley. Can you hear me, Doctor?
Adam.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Yeah, I'm here. Yes.
And, uh, Food Services Director, um, Mrs. Nadine Lorenzen.
Yes.
We also have Paul Livingston, who's, uh, our, uh, Finance Consultant. Can you hear me, Mr. Livingston?
If I can.
And we also have on the call, uh, Liz Peterson this evening. Liz, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. So in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the Town Manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference or video conference via Zoom app and Facebook Live, uh, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We will turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, uh, we will cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair, Mr. Schoenbrini, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking careful, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commenters, I will, uh, the Chair will call on each, uh, by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Those are the guidelines for this evening's meeting, and I will turn it back to the Chair to start with our agenda items.
So the first item on the agenda is, uh, public comment. Um, is there anybody in the meeting that wants to make a public comment? If you do, you can either turn on your computer's camera, or you can raise your hand and we'll call him. Dr. Burnham, do you recognize anyone as somebody that is either not a guest or a presenter?
I do.
Okay.
But there's no one indicating that they're interested in public comment.
All right. Uh, if there's no public comments, uh, then we're gonna, uh, review and approve the regular minutes. Um, so the minutes that are before the board today are minutes from, um...
We don't have minutes this evening, I don't think.
Oh, sweet. No minutes. All right. Next. Let's go down the list. I thought I saw him, but I didn't see them. All right. Uh, if there's no minutes, then the next item on the agenda, I believe, is the Chair's report. And, um, Brian is not here, and I do not want to make a report because I have nothing to report. Uh, so we'll move on and, uh, go to the Superintendent's report.
Actually, this evening, we do have some line item transfers.
Oh, we do. Okay. Sorry. It's my first time. I'm not very good at this.
It's fine. Takes, takes a little practice. You'll, you'll get used to it very quickly.
Carol makes it look so easy. All right. So let's go through and, uh, approve the line item transfers while I'm clicking back and forth.
For everybody's convenience, I'm going to screen share here. Um, and I will, um, offer an opportunity to Dr. Livingston to, uh, provide us an overview of, uh, the line item transfers before you this evening. Dr. Livingston?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, this, as you know, has been a very unusual year. We're coming into the closing of FY24. And with the fact that the town accountant position was vacant for about eight months, your Director of Finance position was vacant for a number of months. There have been many, uh, late postings, late listings of revenue, all kinds of different things that have occurred, and it's quite honestly one of the most unusual years I've seen in any school district. But, uh, we are getting there, and what you have before you tonight is a list of really reclassifications of, um, grant money that should have been paying for salaries in your salary budget. And basically, what you are doing tonight will be, uh, you see the reclassifications there, uh, where the money has been expended and where it will be going, so that we are moving the money from, uh, into the grant salary line and out of these other lines where we have needs. So I would recommend that the suggested motion be to transfer the 411, 675 of available funds from the general budget salary lines to the FY general budgets expense lines for the purpose of meeting expense obligations for the closeout of the FY24 budget.
Will anybody be willing to make a motion to transfer the money as described?
I can make a motion.
And is anybody willing to second?
Yeah, I will second it.
Okay. Dr. Burnham, I think we need a roll call vote for the transfer of the funds as described.
All right. Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozowski?
Yes.
Beadmore?
Yes.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, uh, for your work and helping us out on this stuff, Dr. Livingston. I know this has been, uh, incredibly challenging.
Thank you, sir. There's still a little bit of work to do as we, you know, the, uh, lump sum payroll is just going to be paid tomorrow and won't be posted until probably Friday, the day after that. We still have the summer encumbrance payroll to be, that we're factoring in into all of our figures and all our numbers. So, uh, well, we'll be landing soon, and there are, uh, later on in tonight's meeting, you have, uh, some encumbrances that are typical, that you carry over when invoices aren't available and materials aren't available, uh, aren't sent on time, that are typically carried over into the next fiscal year and what I would call escrow. Um, and you'll be approving some of those. Most of those will take place, but a lot of them won't, in fact, take place, and we are able, uh, we have held many of them because of the unusual nature of the year. So whatever we need to balance, we will not proceed with those. So, um, it, it's coming soon to the end. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Uh, Mr. Beadmore.
So it looks like the next item on the agenda, Dr. Burnham, there's a notation under five for the warrant. Uh, we don't need to do anything for that, correct? The warrant total was signed and everything was dealt with?
Warrant total was signed. Um, Mrs. Peterson, you didn't drop any warrants into the, the meeting folder, did you?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yep. All of the warrants are in the meeting folder.
And do you have a total?
I do. Let me look that up for you. The warrant total is $159,241.22.
Thank you.
And, uh, do we need to do anything to approve that, or is that, has that been finished?
Nope.
They've just, they've been signed, so, um, it's just for information.
Okay. All right. So then it's the Superintendent's report, correct?
Correct.
All right. Dr. Burnham?
All right. So this evening, I just wanted to share with the committee that, um, school and district administrators, um, as a team, will be participating in the Department of Education's Instructional Leadership Institute this summer, and that will be occurring July 29th, 30th, and 31st. I also wanted to make the committee aware that we, uh, recently learned that Linda Hargraves, who's been the longtime Office Manager at DBUS, has retired. Um, and we will be working with someone new, um, someone new who will be working on all of our bus schedules this summer. Um, we hope to, uh, have a smooth transition in working with a new partner on these efforts. Um, I also wanted to, uh, make the committee aware, there was a communication that was sent out uh, from the Mass School Building Authority. They are getting prepared to launch their next school survey assessment in the fall. MSBA's Enabling Statute requires that a periodic survey be conducted to assess the elementary and secondary public schools across the Commonwealth. The survey will include site visits at approximately 1,580 schools, um, as well as the compilation of, uh, existing data at approximately 120 additional schools currently in the MSBA's program pipeline. This assessment will result in a published report sharing an understanding of the building condition and general environment for the Commonwealth's public schools. Beginning in the fall, architectural and engineering experts will visit these public and elementary and secondary schools. Um, and buildings are evaluated regardless of whether or not the district has any plans for improvements or new schools. Site visits will not be conducted at schools in the MSBA's program pipeline unless construction has been completed. Site visits at recently completed schools will establish a baseline for comparison in few, in future, um, assessments. The assessment will evaluate key factors, including the condition, capacity, maintenance, and educational environment. Um, it's important to note that the data collected during this assessment is just one factor used to determine which school facilities present the highest level of need and urgency, and the results are not the sole basis the MSBA uses to determine any district's eligibility for funding. Um, they report that there will be an update related to the scheduling of site visits, um, later in August. Um, I have several questions that were forwarded to me by school committee members. I, I'm wondering, uh, Mr. Schoenbrini, if it would be all right to address and respond and provide answers to those later in the second public comment period, so that we can move the agenda along for the guests who are here, uh, for different agenda items this evening?
Unless anybody has an objection, uh, that works for me.
Okay.
So, um, we are on to new business, and we have a discussion regarding head injuries and, uh, the medical responses and the schools' responses to head injuries.
So at this point, I would like to, uh, turn things over to our Athletic Director, Kevin Bigelow, um, as well as our Trainer, Dave Abraham, and of course, Dr. Ridley.
Thank you. Um, I don't, so I sent in a few documents that were asked for. I don't, do you have those?
They are available in their folders. Yep.
Okay, okay. Um, so I think this all started a long time back. Uh, a question was posed, and correct me if I'm wrong, regarding repetitive head trauma at a younger age and how it correlates to CTE at a later age. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, that was, that was me.
Okay. Um, so, you know, from, from my perspective, from, uh, Mr. Abraham's perspective, you know, our work is mainly, you know, when we see something that could be a potential head injury to address it, um, to, you know, return to play and things like that. So I'm glad that Dr. Ridley is here because he can definitely speak more to, um, you know, the, the question at hand.
So, thank you, everyone, for, uh, inviting me here. I'll just, uh, introduce myself a little bit. I'm, I'm Adam Ridley. I am one of the six, uh, sports and exercise medicine providers at UMass. Um, we are all, uh, of the six providers that we have at UMass, we are all fellowship-trained, uh, sports medicine providers, uh, which means that we have extra training in concussion management and make us, uh, some of the concussion experts at UMass. And so we see the vast majority of concussions that, uh, are sustained, uh, in the setting of sports-related injuries, and we, uh, run the sports, uh, concussion clinic at UMass. So our group is headed by, uh, Dr. Lee Mancini. He was gonna try to be here tonight, but was unfortunately unable to make it. Uh, but he also holds many roles across the, the state, including, uh, he's the Vice Chair of the Sports, uh, Medicine Committee for the MIA, excuse me, M-I-A-A. Um, and then for reference, we partner with, uh, nearly 20 high schools. I don't have the exact number, I'm sorry. Uh, about 20 high schools in the central Mass area, uh, and are also the head team physicians for many of the colleges in the area, including, uh, Holy Cross, UMass, Amherst, First Disumption, and then I play a, a major role at Fitchburg State University, um, as well as covering, uh, for, uh, Leinster High School and, uh, Fitchburg High School. So, um, we're very well-connected to, uh, the community and see a lot of athletes related to, uh, with concussions. Um, and so I don't have any sort of formal presentation, but, uh, with, when, uh, it had come up that there was questions about concussions, I offered, uh, to be available tonight to, uh, answer anything that, that may pop up. Um, but before I kind of open it up to concussions, I will say that, um, Kevin and Dave have been exceptional. I, I can't, I can't speak highly enough of both of them, so, um, they have done an exceptional job with, with the, with the students. I've, I've worked with a lot of, um, athletic directors and athletic trainers, and, and they do a very nice job. So, um, I'm happy to answer any sort of questions, and if you need any sort of formal statements by any means, I had already spoken to, uh, my boss, Dr. Mancini, uh, and we can always put together a formal statement, uh, of sorts, if you need that. Uh, but mainly here to answer questions, but also gather, uh, information on what sort of questions you have. So hopefully, we can put together some sort of, um, some sort of information that you might need.
I see Peter has a question. Uh, go to Peter.
Uh, Tony, I don't want to preempt you because I know you had a, a number of questions, so I, I'd be happy to defer to you, and, okay.
No, good.
Uh, so, uh, Dr. Ridley, first of all, thank you for, uh, your service to our school and our, our surrounding schools. Um, we've, we've met, uh, during and after some sporting events and, uh, over the course of the last year, and, and, uh, you've, you've been, uh, really, really extraordinary, as, as, as well as, um, uh, Dave and Kevin, uh, just continually, always looking out in the best interest, uh, for our kids. Um, I, I can tell you personally, um, I'm, I'm an alumnus of Lunenburg and have personally sustained concussions on Lunenburg Fields, and, and now my son, uh, has unfortunately found himself in that situation uh, over the course of the last couple of years, and, and I could tell you that the, uh, the experience is literally night and day, uh, in, in terms of how far we've come over the last few decades uh, in our awareness and, and making sure that our, our kids are very well taken care of in the unfortunate event that they sustain a concussion. Um, my question, though, really goes to, um, you know, a, as a school committee and as school administrators, uh, obviously, it, it is our duty to, to follow the protocols that are put in place, um, by the MIA and by other authorities. Um, and, and I think that those, those protocols are, are outstanding. From a, from, from a best practice and, and also from a liability standpoint, though, is there more that we could be doing, um, from a, from a policy standpoint, uh, to ensure that the health and safety of our kids?
So I would say in terms of, uh, sort of big picture, I mean, from the standpoint of liability, um, as it relates to getting athletes back, the, where that, that comes up most often are sort of in, in two places. The first being the initial assessment of a concussion, but then also probably, uh, just as important, um, the, the decision to get a, an athlete back to sports after, uh, concussion has been identified and, and, and athletes being treated for that. Um, so as it relates to, uh, um, the initial assessment, you know, at the high school level, I, I would say we're very, very, very conservative in terms of pulling, um, athletes out. So, um, you know, with the rules that the MIA has set up with, uh, with providers on the sidelines and, and going through the, the assessment, different types of assessment tools that we use, things like what is called the SCAT V or SCAT VI, um, which allow us to do sort of a thorough assessment on the sideline, usually takes about 10 to 15 minutes. Um, that, that's the first sort of step, the first sort of hurdle in terms of, um, uh, identifying these concussions and getting someone into sort of our, our, our protocols. Um, but from there, I think one of the challenges that, uh, you know, oftentimes comes up is the, the ability to get patients in and back and forth into clinics, um, to evaluate the sort of progress of that concussion and then, and then ultimately, uh, be released back to the field. So for us, the, you know, the biggest thing, especially at this level, is making sure that the, uh, parents are always involved in this concussion management as we're always dealing with minors in, at the high school level typically, other than, you know, some seniors. But, um, typically having the, the parents involved. So those are the two areas where I think people, you know, where the, the liability comes up. Um, but again, because of how we have all of our athletes fall up with us in clinic and have that conversation with parents, um, you know, that liability sort of falls out on us, uh, to make sure as physicians that we're, we're clearing, we're, we're tracking symptoms appropriately and clearing these athletes appropriately to get back to, to sports.
Is there, are there any other questions for Dr. Ridley? Um, Dr. Ridley, I was the one that, uh, proposed this topic. And the reason I became interested in this topic is because I represented somebody who was a professional or semi-professional. He was not really good at mixed martial arts, but he did it for a long time. Like, he didn't have a great record, but he did it for a long time, and he developed, um, a concussion syndrome that resulted in some pretty serious criminal charges and some violence. And so I started following the literature when that happened, and the thing that made me concerned was, when I looked at the most recent study from the CTE Center at BU, which was released in 2023, it was the first study that focused on amateur athletes, and it was also a study that had come out long enough after Massachusetts' concussion protocols were put in place that the data in the study would reflect people who were in amateur athletics with these concussion protocols. And so the concern that I had was that the rate of concussion or of CTE for amateur athletes was significantly higher than what I had expected, and it was not as high as professional athletes, but it was significantly higher than what is in the population. Uh, and so last, in the last couple of days, I went through and looked at the MIA's protocols. I looked at the state protocols. So far as I can tell, the last time they had been touched was 2014, and this article came out in 2023. Um, in particular, I'm interested in hearing your opinion about what you think needs to be revamped about the protocols in light of that data.
Yes, I think that's a good question. I can, I can say that the MIA is in the process of working on some of those. Um, we actually follow, most of the time, our protocols are based off of most of the consensus statements, um, from the, uh, national organizations that, uh, run sports medicine, that, that contribute to sports medicine. Um, so the American, uh, Medical Society of, excuse me, Amer- American Medical Society of Sports Medicine and American College of Sports Medicine have consensus statement on concussion management. And that's primarily what we follow as a group. Um, so yes, I would agree that, uh, the MIA certainly probably needs to update some of their, um, some of their requirements, but I would say that the vast majority of sports medicine providers, if not all, are ba- are going based off of the most recent, um, consensus statements. And so every four years, uh, new consensus statements come out, and last year, uh, due to delay from COVID, uh, the consensus statement, the most recent consensus statement came out from last year. And so, um, that includes changing some of the, uh, sports concussion assessment tools. So that SCAT tool that I talked about went from the Level V to the Level VI, SCAT VI, um, which includes additional testing and increase the sensitivities of some of the tests, um, so that we can pick up on some of the more subtle findings of concussion on the sideline. Um, so yes, I agree with you that the MIA, um, with the, it probably needs to update, uh, a statement, but I would say the practice of concussion management, um, is, uh, significantly more advanced and up-to-date as most recently as a year ago with the, the main concussion, concussion statement, um, put out last year. Concussion consensus, excuse me.
So a follow-up question on that first question. Um, one of the things that struck me in this data was the idea that the cause of death being, is, is more often than not suicide. And I, in looking through the protocols, I didn't see, and maybe this is because there's things that are sort of operating behind the scenes, but looking through the protocols at the website for MIAA and the state of Massachusetts, there doesn't seem to be a tie-in between the medical doctors and psychologists, psychiatrists, school counselors. If, if it's, if it's more clear now, based on the 2023 study, that the cause of death for people with CTE is suicide, why isn't that being integrated into the, the statements and protocols? Why isn't there a psychiatric component?
Yeah, so I, I will say that for our, our group, I can only speak to sort of how we run our protocols. Um, part of our protocol, every time we see an athlete, is to ask them about, um, suicidal, I, um, suicidal thoughts, uh, or self-harm. So in every single one of my concussion notes, I ask a patient, um, about their... about their, their history of suicidal thoughts and any increased thoughts of suicide in the setting of any sort of head injury. It's actually a very common thing to happen in the setting of acute concussion for people to have thoughts of harming themselves. So that is a topic that comes up every time we see an athlete. And so the time, so not everyone gets referred for any sort of psychiatric support. But if they flag positive for any of those findings, then yes, we would get them usually set up with some sort of counselor to help with the process of getting through the concussion and then tracking beyond that point. If they still continue to have those symptoms. One of the major risk factors for prolonged concussion concussive symptoms is actually a history of anxiety and depression. So that's also a huge part of our, our protocol is to dig diving deep into a lot of the other sort of risk factors for psychiatric illness, which include, you know, the history of anxiety, depression, history of ADHD, sleep disorders, any headache history, including family history of headache. And again, any sort of history of suicidal ideations or harming themselves. So that is a part of the, of the protocol for us. Again, I, again, I can't speak to why some of these consensus statements are not updated to that, but I will say that for us, we, we, that is certainly a part of our protocol.
Would it be harmful to have, like, we have a relatively small school district. Would it be harmful to, instead of, you know, trying to figure out the screening tools, just to have them talk to a counselor? Is that going to be more harm than good? Or is that something that, you know, would be, in your opinion, would that be helpful?
Are you saying, just to clarify, are you asking for anybody who sustains a concussion, if they should be immediately connected with a counselor?
Or, or just like, if there's a decision to pull the athlete from competition because of a, a head injury, whether it's a concussion where they lose consciousness or not, one of, like, would it be harmful for us or for the patient, for the student to say, you know, like, he's going to check in with Kevin, he's going to check in with Dave, and he's going to check in with the school counselor?
Oh, I don't think that's harmful at all. In fact, I, I, I push for every single high school student to have access to a counselor once a week, if I could. I think it's, it's a lot of times a, a matter of accessibility and resources. I mean, it's undoubtedly like the fact, you know, we're currently living in a time where the stress and, and sort of mental health of our high school students is, is, you know, worse than it's been in a long time, I think. So you know, I, any sort of opportunity to get any of these kids extra support, I'm, I'm all for. I don't think there's any harm in doing that. In fact, you know, you could probably uncover a lot of different things by getting some consistent time with a counselor. I would say in general, as it relates to the recovery from a concussion, you know, we do, again, we do a pretty in-depth history and get a sense of where someone might be at. And that includes having the, the parents weigh in because you know, not every high school student wants to talk about these sorts of things or middle, middle school student. But yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. I don't think there's any harm in having that extra support.
Peter has his hand up again, so we'll go back to Peter.
Yeah, I just have some specific questions in terms of the experience that our kids are going through in the event of a concussion. And, and I've reviewed the protocols, but I don't have them in front of me. Unfortunately, I'm traveling on business right now. And my recollections are from personal experience with my own child. So bear with me for a moment, but I just want to gain some clarity here in terms of who the athletes are, are interacting with as part of that return protocol. My experience, and this was not during the most recent academic year, but the year before that, was that there were a number of discussions that occurred with the coaches, with the trainer and with the athletic director. But ultimately, my child need to be cleared after a face-to-face visit with his own primary physician. And again, I, I recall going through that with him, but I don't recall exactly, you know, working with either you or your office. And, and what I'm getting to here is the specificity of, of dealing with a sports medicine practitioner versus a pediatrician and, and what the training and, and whatnot might be in terms of these different practitioners. So if you could speak to that, and I, again, I apologize, I'm, I'm, I'm calling from my own experience here, but hopefully you, you can see what I'm getting to here in terms of, you know, the, the specificity of some of the issues that you just brought up and, and where my own child's pediatrician may not be as informed as you might be.
Yeah, no, that's a, a really good question, a very insightful question, because that is something that we run into frequently. So ultimately, an athlete can, or a student athlete can be cleared to return to the field. I, it needs to be cleared by a physician. And that oftentimes, if someone's not established with our group, often times is done by that patient's primary care provider, which could be a pediatrician, family medicine provider, internal medicine pediatric provider. So in general, through those sort of board certified physician roles, there's not extensive training in concussion management. So for our board certification for sports medicine, we do get tested on concussion management. And so that's, that we do have significantly more training as it relates to concussion management. So technically, you can be cleared by your primary care, though we highly encourage people to be cleared by a sports medicine provider. So we just recently partnered together here with Lunenburg over the last year. So you know, what we've been doing most recently is having athletes see me in clinic. The challenge is sometimes families are not always, you know, they're not, either they're already established very well with their primary care provider and they want to be seen by that person. And, and that's okay, but I, I would encourage people if they can to see me. I'm, I'm even at, I'm at Leominster Hospital three days a week. So I'm, I'm nearby. I'm actually in the clinic right now. But you know, if, 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 if possible, it'd be great to be able to see all, all concussion athletes in my clinic or one of my partners' clinics. Our goal as a group is in the setting of certain injuries to get people in right away. So our goal is always about 48 hours to be able to see someone. That's not always the case, but it is, you know, we, we try our best to make that happen. But yeah, we, we certainly have more, more experience than, than most people's primary care providers.
And, and I, you know, obviously as a parent, I don't want to interfere at all with parental rights. I don't want to, to give as a school committee member, medical advice to parents, but I, you know, I would encourage, you know, Kevin and, and Dave, when these circumstances arise, you know, it, it certainly probably would be worth advising parents if you're not already of some of these issues in terms of the differences in, in expertise that, that, that may, that, that, that exist and, and obviously, you know, this extraordinary resource that we have available to us now.
Yeah, I, I feel like I can speak on their behalf. I, I, Dave and Kevin have been, like I said, have been exceptional. So they have my administrator's direct phone number and have been very good about giving athletes that number to call and get scheduled with me as soon as possible. So it, it's been a, it, it's one of those things that I think it's more hesitate, again, and more hesitation on the parental side of things. Not knowing me and, and, you know, I'm happy to introduce myself to the, the community in some way, if, if there's an opportunity to do so, but yeah, we're, we're happy to see, see these athletes because we know that it is, you know, concerning, concerning problem and something that we would be very happy to help with. So.
You know, not, not specific to just concussions, but this has been part of the process since bringing on a full-time trainer at the school. I think just familiarity with the training room and being open with Dave and saying, hey, yeah, we were at a road game yesterday and I, I hurt this type of thing. I think far too often, I'm hanging around the training room and, you know, a student athlete might say, I hurt this three weeks ago. And that's not really what we want, right? Like just as the doctor said, within that, that time period, you know, I know, I know Dave wants to know, you know, what's going on with all of our student athletes. Can, can I ask a question? First of Adam, this is like a really simple logistics question. Suppose there was like a meeting at the beginning of the year where it was like a meet and greet with like coaches and athletes and Kevin and Dave were there? If, would you be willing to go to that like one time of year meeting so that people knew who you were?
Yeah, I, I've offered that up to all the schools I've worked with. So this past year, it didn't, didn't work out quite right. I, I tore my Achilles tendon, so I was out for a little bit, but over the summer, but I, I'd be happy to try to coordinate whatever that date is that you do your sort of meet and greet with coaches and parents and athletes. I'd be happy to attend or if, if not available, I could always put together a video to introduce myself or however, however way, but I, I'd love to get a chance to do that. Yep, that'd be, that'd be perfectly fine.
And Carol has a question.
Thank you. I have two very quick ones, I think, I hope. First, and probably more for Kevin. The handouts that we received, do all parents and kids get these handouts? Even if they didn't hurt their head?
Yes. So that's part of the registration process at the beginning of each season.
Okay. And my other question perhaps is more for Kate. As a teacher, I was asked, and someone who had a fairly severe concussion as an adult, I was asked to talk to the high school staff at the school I worked in to explain to them why the kids could talk to their friends, but couldn't do their homework. Is there any kind of, I'm assuming there is, but hoping there is, some kind of education for the staff so that their expectations are reasonable for kids coming back from concussions?
Yeah, it's been my experience and I think perhaps Kevin might be able to speak to this too, as it happens at Lunenburg High School. Typically, it would be guidance counselors, my recollection, when, when I had a student who had been impacted in this way that had some short-term restrictions, brain rest, that sort of thing. It was either a counselor or the nurse that would provide that follow-up information. And oftentimes a short-term 504 plan may need to be developed to provide those accommodations. And if a 504 plan is developed, everyone has to follow it. But to your point about, you know, the understanding of why it's important, that, that messaging, generally speaking, like I said, came through a counselor in the guidance office or the nurse.
And I'll just chime in. Every time an athlete sees us in clinic, we write a new note or provide new accommodations, very clear accommodations, whether it be 50% and less homework, extended time on exams, if appropriate, evaluation for 504 plans. And then usually, you know, no standardized testing in the setting of an acute, acute head injury. So we try to make it really easy. So it's, it's, there's not a lot of decision that, you know, there doesn't need to be a lot of decisions made related to what the, the athlete, student athlete needs. It's more about distribution of that information. Once that athlete returns to the school with a, a letter and those accommodations written out. And, and again, this is, this is the same sort of protocol that we use for all the high schools, but we also use those, those protocols at, at the division one level for athletics in college. So it's a very much the same, same protocol across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, I believe Laura has a question.
Yep, okay, sorry. What happens when a student thinks that they don't have a concussion and declines in our, in our system and declines any sort of assistance and we can't get the parents on board either? What is our
procedure? Yeah, yeah. If there's a concern for concussion and an athlete hasn't been evaluated and a parent doesn't want them to be evaluated, they, they can't return to sports until they're evaluated and cleared. I mean, it's, it, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, there's not really a, if there's any concern from our medical staff that someone has sustained an injury that could have been a concussion, or if they're exhibiting any symptoms in the setting of, of recent head injury that are concerning for concussion, then it's, there's just, you can't go back. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. I mean, you're going to have people that try to avoid the system. I mean, there's, you know, you're going to have athletes that have a head injury and don't tell anyone. And that's, that's sort of inevitable. But you know, if there's any sort of question or concern, it comes to our attention, then the athlete cannot go back until they get a full evaluation.
Okay. And that's our, that's our procedure, our protocol. We, we do that with athletes. And how often does that happen?
Oh, I mean, on the sideline of a football game, it happens all the time. Like we're, you know, we're, we're part, part of what we're, you know, I, I stand on the sideline, our, our, our group stands on the sideline, Dave stands on the sideline. One of our main jobs is scanning for, scanning the field for head injuries. And so, you know, the first, you know, we're watching for, and, and we watch, you know, you know that there's certain types of ways that someone can be hit and you know that they're at higher risk for head injury, or someone stands up there a little bit wobbly. That doesn't necessarily mean they have a concussion, but it does mean that they need to be evaluated. And so that's sort of my, my main role on the sidelines of, of games. But you know, again, a kid could sustain a concussion playing football with their friends on the weekend. You know, these, these things happen not at school all the time. Like I have a ton of student athletes that come in who play sports, but they had a head injury playing with their friends. And so that's, you know, these things happen at all, all the time. Getting off the bus, something happens, they hit their head, you know, it could happen anywhere, anytime. So that's a challenging of the, that's a challenging part of these injuries. So I think one of the, the things that I, I love about Dave is that Dave has, has created such a good relationship with so many of the athletes. It's kind of, it's really fun to watch them come in because they'll just, they'll spill their, they'll spill their life to, to Dave because he's always got his door open and he's very, very kind to them. But I think that's the biggest thing is that, you know, you want to have an environment where the athletes feel comfortable sharing that information because again, we're not always going to be there to watch the, the injury occur.
I just want to say.
My experience, the football, the football refs are really good too. Like, you know, they're, they're, they're very well trained and very aware and will point to a kid and send them to Dave when, when, when there's even a shred of a doubt.
Yeah. David, I believe you were going to say something.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to personally thank the doc for, for present, presenting tonight and for working with us this past year. He's been tremendous. The kids love him and I know every parent that has met him, they love him as well. My big thing I think is like what Doc said is I think some of the parents want the kids to play no matter what. And I had some kids that got hurt. And no, my son's fine. I don't want to see, you know, I don't want to get evaluated. I want to go back. I want him to play as soon as he can. So I think the big thing we need to connect to the parents for this concussion issue, to get them evaluated and reevaluated if we need to. I think the kids are, okay, I've, I've had a couple of kids this year that one, one of them had two concussions. And he's playing back, he was, he was back playing. But I think the parents, I think we need to connect with them more than anything. And again, Doc, thank you very much for having a great year with the kids and myself. I enjoyed you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question to Kevin and Dave. Do we have any sort of tracking data on kids and head injuries and to all three of you, is there any number of head injuries where you're like, okay, you just can't do this anymore. I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I track the kids injuries. I, I do have it at, at work. I know we just had one kid this year that had two concussions that I know of. Other than that, we haven't had. We haven't had any. Athlete that we've had. Ban from playing sports at all. But I was going to have Dr. Ridley evaluate. Our football player before returning to football season this year. I think that might. Be a good idea to talk to the parents about that as well. I do have record keeping at school in a doc, everyone that goes to see the doc, I'm sure he keeps our records as well.
Yeah, so we have full medical records on everyone that sees us in clinic. And as it relates to your second question. There is sort of a. There used to be this thought that there was a certain number of concussions that would limit someone's ability to. Return to sport that has sort of fallen to the wayside because we realized that every concussion is a little bit different. So the severity of a concussion. Is varies substantially. And so. And the interesting thing is it even a small head blow can lead to long lasting symptoms, so. You could have an athlete who gets totally knocked out after getting hit in the head, and they have very mild symptoms and they recover from it very quickly. You can have people that have very minimal head trauma and have the exact opposite, you know, long lasting symptoms. So again, every sort of concussion is different. And so our way, you know, the 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 way that it's sort of gone. Most recently is, again, very thorough reassessment of sort of what some someone's symptoms are prior to. And and resolution of those symptoms prior to returning to sport. Where we start having that conversation of whether it's worth returning to sport is when someone's starting to have. More and more cushions with less and less sort of trauma to the to the head. Or if they're having extended. Each time they have a concussion, they're having extended symptoms. More and more each time, and that and that is a common sort of pattern where people will have worse symptoms. With more concussions, but again, there it's it varies so much that we no longer say, you know, three concussions and you're done. Kind of thing. It's it's a very individualized approach at this point, just like sort of the rest of medicine, sort of moving in that direction, or it's it's a more personalized, individualized assessment.
This is for my last question, then we'll move on. Dave and Kevin. Do we like, what is the breakdown of concussions by sport? Do we keep track of that?
Yeah, I briefly kind of wrote that down. And. Believe it or not, we have football, we had. Roughly four concussions, one, one player had. Two concussions this year. We had a JB soccer player have a concussion. We had a woman's JV basketball player have a concussion, none in boys' basketball, zero hockey concussions this year, which was interesting. And one JV lacrosse player. Obviously, no contact sports in the spring except lacrosse, the boys, but. So that's what the breakdown was this year.
And when you say four in football, you mean two for that one person?
Yeah, four to four, well, that was, we had three football players, four football players total.
Okay.
One player had two, yes.
Thank you.
And as a matter of fact, one of the what Doc was saying, we had two JV players have concussions and one was more severe than the other, and. The one that was more severe, which he had more symptoms at the beginning, returned to. Returned to play sooner than the one that had the fewer fewer symptoms, which is interesting.
Yo, all right. All right, well, does anybody have any other questions?
I I just have. Just a comment, which is, you know, obviously, we're living in a time here when there's, I apologize for the background noise. I'm in a car. In an electrical storm, so. Apologies if you guys can't hear me well. But, you know, we're we're living in a time when there is a great deal of scrutiny, particularly on contact sports. I believe that the benefits outweigh the risks. I continue to believe that. I believe that my whole life. But I also think that we're extremely fortunate. To have the care that we have and the professional staff that we have. And this. This extended staff that we have from folks like Dr. Ridley, who. Are just extraordinary resources. And I'm I'm thrilled that. We're living in a time when when we're able to provide this level of of care to our kids. So thank you all very much.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Dr. Ridley, thank you so much for coming. Dave and Kevin, thank you for doing such a diligent job at watching our kids. And Dr. Burnham, thanks for organizing this. This is really helpful. If anybody. Doesn't want to go see Dr. Ridley, I think they messed up. He seems like a really nice, genuine guy.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, but if there's anything else that you need, if we can provide any other documentation, or if there needs to be further discussion on any of these, the specifics of this. Happy to continue the conversation in another in another way or another time. So just just let it let me know. I'd be happy to help.
All right, thank you. I think that the next thing on the agenda is the program evaluation. And there's an action item here, so Dr. Burnham.
Actually, the program evaluation is just for discussion. You have a slide deck from. Juliana Hanscom, our director's special services. I had advised the committee. Late last week that she would not be available for this evening's meeting. And then if anyone had any questions, they could send them my way in advance. I didn't receive any questions, but I would leave that open still, that if anybody has any questions. Please forward them to me and I'll get back to you with responses. After consulting with. Julian Hanscom, if needed.
I'm sad she's not here. Her presentations are the fastest.
Well, this is a lengthy slide deck for her.
Fifteen slides is a ton. All right, well, is there any discussion on inclusion support and program evaluation information that's in? Ms. Hanscom's incredibly pithy fifteen slide presentation. Doctor, Carol.
I just wanted to comment that I think this is a really good way to do this. To to have a three year cycle of going through these things and and checking in on. What's going on, particularly in the inclusion spot, because that's really tough to monitor. And I just think it's a good nothing to go through.
And I appreciated that some of the recommendations actually align with the focus work that we had already begun with co-teaching. So. That's it's it's nice to know that we're on the right track.
I will also say, as a non-teacher, looking through the slide deck and recalling things that I've learned on on school committee. About the impacts that. Kids have on other kids in terms of learning. It it makes a lot more sense to me. Knowing that, looking at the slide deck and the three year plan, so like I. I'm grateful that we have that idea. Guiding our our special education department. It does Laura, Laura has a comment.
I did want to say, I think this did bring to our attention that we're gonna have to deal with the sub shortage. I'm not sure how, but that is something. We're gonna have to to deal with because that was one of the big things that was mentioned in here was parents getting pulled.
Yep, and I think that that's fairly consistent challenge across districts everywhere. It it's been a challenge in every district I've ever worked in for the last. Thirty years. But you you're right, we we need to continue to try to problem solve around that.
Is there any other discussion of this agenda item? Being none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Which is the FY twenty four budget carryover on open POs. Dr. Burnham, who's presenting on this?
So it'll be a little bit of a tag team, but I think we'll we'll largely leave it up to Dr. Livingston. So annually, at the end of June. As we're closing out, we have to bring forward a list of. POs that we would need to keep open in order to pay out the bills for FY twenty four. So largely, this is an FYI. For for the school committee. And they vote and acknowledge that these. These purchase orders will be held open. So that. We can continue to pay bills from the current fiscal year as they come in. Dr. Livingston, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. As Dr. Burnham said, this is a very typical process. I have to give credit to Dr. Burnham and the whole staff from from Liz to Heidi to Penny. For all that they've done trying to keep track of everything during this year. With all of the the craziness that has gone on. It it was yeoman's work. And we're now at a place that we have these lists, we have a sense of where we are. But again. Until we really come to. The payroll is all being posted, and there is a half day. Half half a payroll that's being done for this last week of the fiscal year. The way it's a five day payroll for the salaried folks. And the hourly folks at this point, which is basically just the custodians, it could be a few custo, a few administrative assistants perhaps. But overall. I think we're. We're in a good place in that we know what we have and what we have to do. We with the with the money that you you took care of tonight. That frees up some of those salary monies that should have been spent by grants. And that allows us to move that into the expense lines where we, you know, had some overages and had some hopes of of getting some things done. As we go through that and adjust it. Between Ezekiel, and again, that's another person that I think you want to commend. The new town accountant Ezekiel at the town hall is just doing yeoman's work, trying to recapture eight months. And part of our difficulty and part of, as I said, Liz and Penny and and Kate was was and Heidi was that. A lot of things just hadn't been posted. Revenue had come in from the state and it hadn't been posted, so we didn't know where we were at. And, you know, there were POs going against it and salaries going against it and salaries going to wrong places. There are, I hope that the committee will take some time. Once we get beyond this and look at. I think some efficiencies that really need to be put in place. This has. Clearly shown that. There are things that could be done more effectively and more efficiently than sending emails back and forth to town hall. And then they, you know, approve a PO. Okay, I I I cleared, I changed the PO, and then an email comes back, and then we have to tell. I mean, there's about. Seven steps to add thirty dollars to a PO because shipping was a little bit higher than something. Those kinds of things just take an incredible amount of time from. The good work that could be being done. And when those things aren't in place. And the people aren't in place, you need to know what is the backup procedure? What's the process? What's, you know, how do you fill in those gaps? That has not been put in place. And it's something that I I look forward to helping your new finance director as much as she needs for as long as you wish to. To help. Consider those process and procedure things that can really. Really make it more effective, because things happen. Positions do become vacant. And what's, who then takes over? Where's the backup? And that hasn't always been thought of. And then when you extend the backup between. The school department that really functions independently under yourselves, you as the school committee, you were responsible for your budget. Well, during those eight months, your budget wasn't being. As effective as it could have been. Because that position was vacant. And then when the, when your finance director left. And I think there's some considerations between town hall and. And the school committee that needs to realize that. Process and procedures come from the school committee to manage their budget. Granted, we are a piece of the town overall. And yes, financial help and financial assistance and and oversight and checking certain things is very important. But not to sometimes the level of minutia where it slows down effective work being accomplished. And taking additional time to get things. Right now, there are there is like two personnel files. There's one in the school office, which. As the superintendent, Kate is the keeper of the records. And you. You honor that and respect that and manage that. But the town is also having to keep is keeping payroll records and and asking for all kinds of information that. Sometimes confidential and sometimes not, but I mean, those things, if an auditor or anybody were ever asking or a towns person wanted to see something. We have all of that in our records. So even just the sheer fact of of duplicating information going back and forth takes a lot of time. So. As I said earlier, you've got some folks that have done a really incredible job for you. And I I honor them because I haven't seen a situation like this. Next year, we will return to, you know, again, and you'll have a new person and I'll be hopefully helping out, but. You will be getting your quarterly reports. This end of the year is most difficult. But we have a plan in place and we have a way, as you see on that list that's being held, there are many of those POs being held, simply to see if the dollars are available. There are some small items on there, certainly. You also have to recognize that some of the items on those lists. Are not affecting your general ledger budget, your 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 town budget. Because they are from grants, so they're from Nadine's school lunch revolving account, or they're from, you know, other places like that. There's actually about a hundred thousand dollars between. The ones that are truly on the incumbents list and the ones being held. So that's all going to be slaughtered and put in place and. Onward and upward. Happy to take any questions. Kate? Liz, anybody had had anything in there?
Paul, I have a I have a question.
Sure.
Would you, would, as part of your like. Baton passing to our new finance director. Would you be able to tally up? And provide concrete examples of places where we could be more efficient? And in doing that and writing that memo. Could you also look at? Whether or not. In your opinion, it makes sense to have. Essentially, two systems running in parallel. All the time. I mean, I could see one advantage being that. It's a backup, and the other advantage being that it provides robustness, so that if. Our person has skill sets that the town doesn't, we can help and vice versa. But I can also see it, your point about like seven emails for a thirty dollar adjustment and a PO not making sense. I I guess the thing that. I don't know, and it would be helpful to have a memo on is. Setting aside the things that are obviously just inefficient. Is there a good, you know, finding a bookkeeping reason, legal reason? Procedural reason to have all of this redundancy? So if you could have a memo that would adjust those two things as part of the handoff. That might be helpful. I mean, I don't know what is, what do other members of the committee think? Because like, this has been something I've been thinking about since I realized that. Some of the money we take in. And then some of the money. It gets for our services get. Paid to the town, and then they give us the money, and it just seems like there's a whole lot of money moving around. For no clear reason, like some programs, the money comes to us, some money that. Goes to the town. And the more you move money and the less oversight there is, the more money gets. Hard to find. So. I I just feel really uncomfortable having that be the situation. So I was like, Peter has a comment.
We certainly can do that. I think one of the primary reasons for having somebody. Else at town hall, that well, basically, this too. You do need a bit of a check and a balance on the financial kinds of final steps, because they do calculate revenue. The treasurer brings in revenue. They do process checks. They do that. So in, I think, a kind of system that you want to maintain, you need that kind of a check and balance. You also have to remember that your school budget, just like in most communities, is the largest percentage of the overall budget. It's. You all have health insurance in your budget. I mean, with with those costs, I mean, you're well up to seventy five percent of the town budget, if if not more. I don't have an exact. If if not more, I don't have an exact number in my head, but that's typically what it would be. So a lot of the um, the responsibility for those payments of APs and payroll and human resource management. Fall into your responsibility level. Uh, it is uh, it's different in a schoolhouse. Because of the nature of things that happen and changes that can take place right up, if school's going late until June twenty eighth, as it does some years. You know, there are there are expenses that are unknown up to June twenty eighth, that things can occur, things can happen. Uh, so I I really think. It it's something that requires you, you've had a little bit of HR in the position before and and, you know, always will. But but that is a good kind of with the town, a check and balance system. Uh, you know, the the three three branches of government, uh, you know, your your one branch, the. Finance folks in the school office and then the town. And looking at that together, you create the policies and procedures that are effective for schools. Um, that's something that's missing also, I mean, you don't have the procedures for that I, you know, that I think sometimes need to be in place to clarify. So even if there is a backup process by whoever, you have a protocol as to what to how to follow it, um, so.
It looks like Peter still has his hand raised.
Yeah, tha- thank you for your comments, Dr. Livingston, and um. Yeah, I I we've been talking about having a workshop on this topic, and I think that time would be very well spent. Um, you you know, look, we have a, we have, we have a storied history around here and there are reasons why. Uh, very good reasons why um we've got some redundancy and lots of eyes on our on our accounts. And 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 um, you know, I I think that's more more good than bad in 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 the grand scheme of things and. You know, since since some of those incidents occurred two decades ago. You know, we we've had some financial challenges in Lunenburg, but we have not had. The acute challenges that we've experienced in the last year, and I think, you know, that is a confluence of. Turnover and vacancies in positions and a debacle in software and and IT. And I think that, you know, what we should be thoughtful about. Right now is how do we build resiliency and efficiency into our system? Um, but in particular, resiliency, um, and I think that some of those procedures that you talked about and that sort of thing. Um, could could be helpful in that direction, um, but I think also, you know, there. We need to hold our colleagues on the select board accountable and there needs to be transparency. Um, when there are shortcomings and 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 a and a plan communicated. As to how things are going to get fixed when they're broken and um, I I think that those are all. Learnings from the past year that we can we can look to going forward.
Definitely.
Laura, you had your hand raised and then you put your hand down.
Um, I I did, I I wanted to say that I thought that was a really good point, Tony, asking for the specific examples. Of issues we've had, I was just gonna say that was a really great idea, and I second that.
Carol, you're the only one that hasn't said anything, you want to say anything?
Well, I can just say we can only move forward because um, what went on this year went on this year. And it was one right, that's for sure. Um, so I I would echo that the um workshop this summer to. Um, have some kind of a plan set come, set some kind of policy. So that the financial end is better wrapped around. And um, Dr. Livingston um certainly has helped a great deal with this. And um, we know that our new finance director will be helpful as well. And um, I want to thank Paul for his help too.
Thanks, Carol.
And uh, Dr. Burnham, you said there was an action item, do we need to vote on holding open these accounts?
Yes, please.
All right.
Oh, can I go real quick, I'm sorry, can I go again?
Sure.
I did, I also wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Burnham for this, um, the delays. And and the the issues with communicating with town hall and with getting things done. Have been, they've made this end of the budget year very difficult, so I did want to say thank you to Dr. Burnham and thank you to her administrators. For getting through this, it's been a really tough year, the budget season in general was really tough, and I just wanted to say we do appreciate. How difficult this been, and thank you for getting us to uh June thirtieth.
I would just like to um say that the. The biggest uh lift, I think, was done by uh Liz Peterson, Heidi Spinney and Penny Bornham. Um, you know, the rest of my team has been important all the way along as well. As we've had regular monthly meetings, all of us in the war room with the big screen, going through the budget line by line. Um, but really, the the heaviest lift in supporting um. Dr. Livingston and Dr. DeLeo um in in their ability to navigate and get clarity around. Grants, revolving accounts, budget lines, salaries, expenses, all of it. Um, they they were absolutely critical to to that work.
I think everybody that's met those people, having met all three of them, understands just how wonderful they are, so thanks to them. Um, all right, so we do have an action item to hold open, I'm looking for it in the. Shared file, Dr. Burnham, do we have a list of the stuff that's being held open?
You do, there there's a list of um all of the purchase orders that we would uh request be held open. Um, as we are closing out FY twenty four.
What was the difference between the yellow highlighted ones and the non-yellow highlighted ones?
So the yellow highlighted ones, i- it's more of an internal um.
Okay.
I- indicator to us, um, we referenced that there were some requisitions put in to the system and. Purchase orders were generated, but we held on on moving forward on on those until we. Really refine how much uh funding is available to be spent. So there are many on that list that could be just closed out. And all of the money that's encumbered there just returned, taken off of of the balance. Um, those uh, the yellow area also includes the grant. Uh, lines, it includes revolving accounts. Um, it includes um, I think, a couple of service accounts um that that are still um being held open. Um, but again, that's that that's sort of uh in internal uh marking for for us to. To sort of help ease the tracking um as we're working hard to to close everything out. And the thing is to bring forward to you on June twenty sixth. Uh, when the the year closes out, June thirtieth, so we will be working. Feverishly for the next handful of days, trying to close out as many of the the. The items that are on this list as we possibly can, and we didn't put this list into your folder until today. Because the list was actually much bigger yesterday and the day before. We've been working hard to refine and close things out. Um, so this this list uh will be shorter even by the end of this week. Uh, and definitely in in the handful of days early into July. But there will be some that will will still be open in August, that will still be waiting on invoices to to come through, so.
We're actually closing some that were still open from FY uh twenty-three now at the end of FY twenty-four. Because sometimes the materials simply are not available. Uh, sometimes they they might be available, but can't be shipped for some reason, they don't get to a site. Or sometimes uh the invoice wasn't received, I mean. A lot of the ones that will change in the next week or so for the final warrant that I think is July third. Um, that will, that's just waiting for invoices, so those will, once the invoice and it's put on a warrant and AP warrant and paid. They will come off the incumbents list here.
So, Dr. Burnham, if somebody were to make a motion. And because this is something that you just put in, I want to confirm what we're talking about, it's the inc- it's an Excel spreadsheet, incumbents list. Six twenty-six, twenty-four, there are a hundred and forty-five uh open items. And the yellow highlighted portion ends at line, right at saying line fifty-seven, is that the document you want us to vote on?
That is the document.
Okay, um.
It's basically, you're you're asking for a motion to hold open the POs as uh reported to the school committee as of six twenty-six.
I I I will not entertain a motion because Peter has his hand up, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, I was actually gonna make a motion, so I'll do it, um. I move to uh approve the FY twenty-four incumbences list as presented.
Second. Ready for a vol call, Vol?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Zoski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mr. Schoenbrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Dr. Burnham. Um, let's go on to the next item, the next item on the agenda is uh the community eligibility provisions.
And I will um turn this one over to our food services director, Nadine Lorenzen and. Uh, Ms. Livingston, Dr. Livingston is gonna hang on to this uh meeting for a bit to be available in case you had any questions for him as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Nadine, um, would you like to screen share or would you like me to screen share?
Um, I believe I can screen share.
Right, then I will make you co-host.
Okay. Let's see how I do. Okay, so hello, everyone, I'm Nadine Lorenzen, food service director. And I am here to present to you the community eligibility provision. Um, quick background, um, the community eligibility provision is um. It is. A provision that was authorized as part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten. And it is a provision allowing school districts in high poverty areas to feed. Um, all enrolled students at no cost. And when it began back in two thousand and ten. The schools had to um have at least forty percent. Of enrolled students identify as free as of April first of the previous year. They had to be participating in both of the National School Lunch Program and the national, the School Breakfast Program, excuse me. They needed to offer free breakfast and free lunch, and they needed to uh. To notify their state agency of their intent to participate in the CEP. Um, provisioned by June thirtieth. Fast forward to twenty twenty-three, the community eligibility eligibility provision. Uh, percentage rate has been lowered to twenty-five percent. With that being said. Our. Our schools are now serving universal meals, all of Massachusetts. And there's a, there's a difference between CEP and universal meals, which I'd like to highlight here. So with universal meals, we process applications. And we process meal benefit applications, I should say. And our program is reimbursed through federal and state funds. And those reimbursement rates are based on student statuses as in free, reduced and paid. With CEP, there there will be no meal benefit applications. Our reimbursement will come directly from the federal government. And the reimbursement rates are is a formula based on the percentage of students who automatically qualify for. For free meals based on their household participation in specific means-tested programs. And the reason I'm here to present this year is because Turkey Hill falls into this category. I have this little chart here and um, you can see that the. Numbers have changed drastically and I'll I'll break down the the identified student percentage rate for you. We get that rate um automatically from what we call the virtual gr- uh gateway. Our enrollment is uploaded into the virtual gateway and they send back to me what they call a direct match or a no match. And, excuse me, those matches are based on families and the the families that are. Receiving supplemental, well, SNAP or TANF or any of these programs, those means-based programs that we talked about in the earlier slide. I see that someone has their hand up already, uh, can I stick it all questions till the end?
Yes.
Thank you, um. So. We fall into this category, and I'm here to say, I'm, it's worth looking at, there are benefits and there. There are cons- there are considerations as well. We are not a high poverty area, but the numbers have been brought down so that. More schools and more districts are able to feed all students at no cost. Some of the benefits are, it 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 eliminates the social stigma. Of the free lunch, students being labeled as free and poor, obviously. Um, and it it increases nutritious school meals at no cost to students and families. Which in turn improves learning in the classrooms. It eliminates unpaid meal balances. I mean, I could go on, however, let's get to the concerns. Demographics are changing in our town, you saw it in Turkey Hill. I just showed you Turkey Hill, but if you look closely at a lot of our schools, you can see that those numbers are coming up. I can um, tell you that the primary school was pretty close in their percentage was at twenty-four. The middle high school was at twenty-two percent, middle school, excuse me, high school, twenty-two percent. Um, and those numbers seem to be on the rise. Um, another concern would be, um, is it financially viable? Our program would have to be responsible for providing the free meals with the federal funds that we are given. Um, another concern also would be that we would have to find an alternative income form. To allow for families to receive the school-based fee waivers and other. Um, or fee waivers or reductions and such. I can take questions now.
I am having a hard time seeing anything other than Nadine's screen. Let's see.
Nadine, you might wanna stop screen share?
Absolutely.
It looks like we have, Peter has a question. Somebody at a Galaxy Tab S five E has a question.
So this would not be an open hearing where
I don't know who that is either.
Attendees could, could question. This is questions from the committee.
Sure. So maybe that person could save it for public comment.
Correct.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you. Just a quick question on, th- this would be only for Turkey Hill. This is a per-school program?
It is actually. It, it, it could be groups of schools, districts, single school.
Okay, but the circum, the circumstance that we're in right now is, is that Turkey Hill meets the minimum qualification. Our other schools do not.
Exactly.
So, so we would be applying on behalf of Turkey Hill only, and that would be the only school in the program for this year if we were to pursue this?
Yes.
Okay. Um. I may have missed that answer to my question. Yep.
I'm sorry, and I'd like to add to that, actually, Mr. Beardmore. Answering that question, it would be the only school, but I would like to say that it, it would provide us an opportunity to see how it works and how well it would work for our community, how well it would work for our district. If we were to do it.
Does this put an additional administrative burden on you or your staff?
Actually, no, it would lighten a bit of the burden because I wouldn't be processing meal benefit applications.
Okay. That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, it looks like Laura and Carol both have their hands up. Laura, did you have yours up first?
No, I think it was Carol.
Okay.
Okay, I just, the kids get free meals now paid for by the state and some federal reimbursement, correct?
Yes.
So if we went to this, the, the face of what the kids see is going to be the same or would it not be?
It would be exactly the same. In fact, it could be better. There would be, it looks to me as though the funds would be enhanced. Through the numbers that I've been kind of running, we, we may get a few, a few more dollars, actually.
So, so that what the, the child sees will be the same, if not a little better?
Absolutely.
But we would have to develop a different way of determining who needs the reduced athletic fee and who needs, you know, all these other things we do.
Right, so.
So is that what you think the, the biggest change would be here? The determination of that kind of thing? Or what do you think would be the biggest challenge to going to this?
For the schools, I would say that would be our bigger challenge. For the families, I think it's going to be having students in all of the schools and not having to fill out an application for, you know, your student at Turkey Hill, but you still have to fill out that application for your students at the middle high school and primary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Laura, you have a question?
Um, I want to say first of all, I'm concerned about the increasing number of our students who are falling under the poverty umbrella. Um, and I'm glad that we can provide things like this to them. Uh, what happens if Massachusetts Legislature makes school lunch free again for this year? Would we still be able to participate in this program and enhance the funds that are coming in? And
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I did not mean to cut you off. Please finish.
Tell me. Um, but what, what are the chances that Massachusetts is gonna make lunch free again this year? Because that was a fantastic program.
The chances are very likely. A- as far as I know, we will still have universal meals. So the other schools will still be participating in those universal meals. And Turkey Hill will be, i- if we apply and we are, you know, accepted, we will be participating in the CEP.
Okay, so we can do both and the CEP just enhances the funds for Turkey Hill?
Absolutely.
That's fantastic.
Agreed.
Oh. Are there massive downsides other than the need for oversight and all that?
So I don't, uh, to be very honest, I haven't seen any yet. I'm still doing research and like I had mentioned to Mr. Beardmore, I I wanna go into it with a very open mind and learn as much about it now because I honestly think that they might even bring then that twenty-five down to a lower number so that more schools can get in. I'm not positive about that, but I honestly think that's coming.
If, if I can just jump in, I've recently worked in schools with this program. And we have not found it to be a problem. It actually brings in a little bit more money, as Nadine has suggested. I think you have an opportunity here to start off with one school. You do have other schools that are getting close. Whether they stay at the twenty-five percent and those schools hit that level, or if they bring down the the percentage, you will have had a little bit of experience. Uh, in terms of creating the forms, we actually, I, I actually created forms for a school district recently that allowed us to use that format for, you know, determining whether fees were reduced for field trips and athletic fees and bus fees. And, you know, I don't know all your fees, but all the different things that are available. So I, I, I would suggest, I would recommend that you proceed with this. Um, and I think it would be a good opportunity for learning.
Thank you, Nadine, for putting this together.
I just wanna put a bit of commentary here, which is, this is yet another example of people in the school district working to find money to help make sure that taxpayer dollars are spent as efficiently as possible. And so I want to commend Dr. Burnham and I especially want to commend Nadine. I also always like people that feed children. That's a it's a really good thing to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need an action item on this, Dr. Burnham? Do we need to take?
Yes, please.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the CEP program.
Motion to approve the CEP program for next year at Turkey Hill.
I can second that.
Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mr. Schoenbrin?
Yes.
Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you.
The next budget item is, or in the next agenda item is the budget task force appointment. I think we talked a little bit about this last time and we kicked it down the road until today. Dr. Burnham, do we?
Yep.
Is this an action item and do we need to appoint someone?
We do. It is an action item. You do need to appoint someone, assuming that you want to participate. Uh, you do have the charge of this uh, task force outlined in your, in your packet as it came from the select board, I believe.
I think this was the thing I volunteered to do.
Very exuberantly, yeah.
Thank you, Riley.
All right, it looks like we have comments from Peter and Laura.
Um, I wanted to ask Dr. Burnham two things. Did you talk to Dr. Gilson about being appointed to a committee that's gonna eat up some of her time?
I did not because she is on vacation. So I won't bother her with her new work responsibilities while she's on vacation and not yet with us. I'll, I'll give her that one, one last week of some rest.
Okay, and before we add more work to your plate, I wanted to ask uh, your opinion on it because this is additional work for you. Um, and I also wanted to encourage the committee when they do form to try and keep meetings, um, take the paid employees time considerations into account, uh, a little, put more weight on that because this is um, some of us are volunteers and we're here willingly and some of us, this is their job. Uh, so I do have a little bit of concern about the time issue there. So I wanted to check in with you and see how you felt about being on this committee and if this is something we should push back on or if you're A- okay with it.
Um, I, I really do think that it's up to the committee. Um, if the committee feels that it's a worthwhile endeavor to be part of this bigger analysis and conversation, then that's what we will do.
Laura, did she answer your question?
I mean, she's got the point. Like, it's just, I, I have concerns about I don't like when any thing that Town Hall does involves making more work for our employees on our end. Um, so I'm trying to be cognizant of that. I just, I, I wanted us to consider that, uh, because this is requiring two of our soon-to-be busiest employees uh, and work on there. And I know they did talk about maybe making it during, uh, working hours, but I just, I have some concerns about the time.
Peter, do you have, do you wanna make a comment?
Yeah. Um. So I, I, I had expressed some reservations about this last week and I, I still hold many of those reservations. Um, I think that you know, that this involves and overlaps a lot of responsibilities that, that other committees have and, and other roles, uh, as prescribed by the charter. That being said, I, I did watch the select board meeting last Tuesday and the conversation that they had around it. I read the charge. I, I think that the select board understands that this is a pretty aggressive charge. Um, and the, the timeline is such that for the recommend, for the recommendations to be contributive to the budget process, this all needs to kind of coalesce o- over the course of the next six months. And, and that represents an awful lot of work. That said, with a new town finance director who's only been in the role for six-ish months at this point, a new finance director in the school department, and what we have gone through over the course of the last year with respect to the budget and honestly, the lack of communication and collaboration between the school department and the rest of town government. Um, I, I think that this is worth a shot, even with the reservations that I hold. Um, I, I think that, you know, it, it's a good time to, to build teamwork. Uh, the composition of this, of this committee is well-balanced, um, if perhaps overly reliant on, on employees. Um, but I, I think that this is worth a shot. My, my one, my, my, my one caveat here is that I, I do suspect that as we get further into the year, that the charge for this committee may be amended. And the select board even suggested that they may do that. I, I would be willing to support this with the caveat that any amendment to the charge be agreed to by the school committee in advance of that taking effect. Um, because I, I frankly don't want I, wh- while I said last week, I thought we should put the, you know, the, the horse before the cart. They should come up with the charge. They did exactly that. Um, but I, I think that this is a, this is a good opportunity to partner, but to partner in the truest sense and, and if changes are made, that that should be something that, that we should consent to. I also think that the meeting should occur during the business day, which I know is maybe prohibitive for some of us, but I, I echo the concerns of, of that, that Ms. Brzezinski brought up a little bit earlier. Oh, one, one last thing. I'm sorry. We have a regular practice, uh, in the schools of when information is requested from other committees or other branches of, of the town government, um, that the school committee be furnished those documents in advance. Um, and in some cases, we approve sending those documents. I, I don't think that we should continue with that process for the purposes of this committee. Uh, in fact, I don't think that we should do anything to slow it down. Um, but I do think that the school committee should be copied on all documents and communications that the superintendent and finance director deem relevant.
Peter, you have anything else or can I go to Carol?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Carol, go ahead.
Um, I agree with nearly everything that Peter said. I, I just would mention that as we were struggling through this budget year, I said many times, we need to have a budget committee with the town manager so that we're not caught not understanding what happened when we got on a number. We, we were caught surprised by the town manager's budget for this coming year, for the budget we just hassled through. This committee would in fact do that. So it is accomplishing something that I think we needed, which was more communication and that the budget for the next year, FY twenty-six, if my, my math is correct. Um, but anyways, the budget for next year shouldn't come out of nowhere at us. We should know where it's coming from. And the other piece is, I do believe a fair amount of this is to solve the problem of exiting staff. That the town can't pay people what they deserve and they have people leaving all over the place. And as you will see by the personnel report, so do we. So there are things that need to be looked at and can only be looked at by a change in the way things are funded. The only way I can see of getting a change in the way things are funded or the most expeditious way of getting a change in the way things are funded is through this committee. So I, I'm, I'm with Peter. I, I'm a little leery about some of it, but I trust the intention. Um, I know it is Renee's brainchild and I totally trust her intentions. And, and I think this is something that we need to jump in on.
I'm just gonna make a quick comment. I have three things I want to say. The first thing is, I volunteered because I was standing near Renee at a meeting. I did not volunteer because I thought I would be the best person, but I volunteered because she was close to me. And I also volunteered because I thought that Carol had done way more than was fair to place on her last year during the budget process. And so I did not think it was fair to let it go undone or have Carol do it because she's already carried the load long enough. Um, but I do hear what Peter's saying. My concern is if it is during the workday, I do not have control over my schedule. If, if somebody gets arrested, like as soon as I get out this meeting, I gotta call somebody who's talking to the police tomorrow. So I don't have as much control over my schedule as I would like. And I would hate for that to mean that the school and the people in the school aren't heard when it comes to reallocating funds. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I think that no matter what happens, we should be an active participant because in my experience, and Carol's been very diplomatic about this, but in my experience, I think that we were not addressed in good faith in certain parts of the budget negotiation. Addressed in good faith in certain parts of the budget negotiation with the now, uh, resigned, uh, town manager. And I think that if we have a seat at the table for this process. It will mean it would be more difficult to do what they originally did when they said, this is your number, you're never getting anymore. And then proceeded to negotiate. At, you know, for four more months. So that's the second thing. And the third thing is, I think that. We need to participate because Renee asked. And I say that in two ways. Number one, I have a great deal of respect for Renee. She's an exceptionally smart person. She's practical and wise. But I also think that we need to support this because when we needed help, she helped us. And so if nothing else than to return the favor and say, we stand with you, I think we should do this. Um, but I, I think based on my understanding of what happened at the select board meeting last night. And Peter's comments and Carol supporting those comments. I am concerned that I may not be the best person to do this. That being said, I'm happy to do it. I just want to make sure that I can give a hundred percent to make. To capture every single penny we can to help retain employees. That is my number one concern in participating in this process. So I'm, if anybody wants to make a comment, I'm, I'm happy to take a comment in response.
I'll, I'll jump in with a comment. I can appreciate that you can't say that you can be at things during the day. We don't know that that's the way this is going to roll. So I think we could make an appointment. To put you on this committee and with the. Caveat or whatever the correct term is, that should these meetings not fit into your schedule, we would need to make a reappointment.
Okay, so one, one idea that I had based on something Laura said last time. Was Laura had said, but what if we had two people? And the, the charge doesn't allow us to have two people?
Right.
But if we had somebody that was a primary and then a consistent and designated backup. That might serve the same function. And so that like, we wouldn't have to scramble the day of and you know, like I get. I get called up to federal court for an arraignment. I know that I can go to whoever the designated backup is and, and they can do it. Um, and that, you know, like sometimes. When things come up, it's like I send it to, like I had a PTO thing where I sent it to Carol and I sent it to Laura. And both people said yes, which was like super awesome. But it just made it a little more clunky in terms of making sure someone was there. So I, I don't know, what, what does everybody think about having like a primary and then a designated backup?
That's, that was actually what I was going to suggest. Um, because, uh, Tony, I do think you are uniquely suited to be on this committee. I think you have a very good way of building consensus. And explaining things. So I, I actually do think you're very well suited for the committee. So, um. Yeah, if one of us wanted to be a backup, that would be acceptable or, because two of us can each go to the meeting and one of us can just. Sit quietly if we want to get. The lay of the land and then be like the understudy. Um, for when someone goes and gets themselves arrested in a really fun way. Not you, you're a client.
I'm not getting arrested.
Presumably, um, but you know, you never know. Um, but I was actually going to suggest that we have, uh, an appointed member and then ask about an alternate. I'm also not, the, the makeup of the committee is seven members and four of them are not elected or appointed officials. They're, um, they're employees of the town. And I'm, I'm not thrilled and there's no citizen space. There's no space for citizens at large. So I'm not thrilled with the makeup of the committee, but that's not us. I'm, I am thrilled that the committee is happening. Um, so. Yeah, those are my two points was that, yeah, I think we should, if, if they're open to us having an understudy or alternate. I think that would be the best course of action.
Peter, what do you think?
I support the idea. Uh, these are going to be public meetings. Anybody can go to them. Um, I don't, I don't think that there's going to be. A lot of, uh, formal Roberts rules process in these meetings or votes. This is largely an advisory committee. Um, whose, whose charge is to make a recommendation. And, um, you know, ultimately whoever we appoint. Really needs to represent the whole of the school committee. And, um, I, I think that that's a good strategy to come at it and make sure that we are, uh. All well informed and consistent in, uh, our approach to this.
All right, well, um, we need an action item, Dr. Burnham?
Yes, you need to, uh, make, make an, an appointment and take a vote to make that official.
So, uh, do we want to make a motion to appoint a person and a designated backup?
Do you want to be the person, Tony?
I, I'll be the person. I said I would. But, and it would be, I, I'm not saying this to be funny, but it would be helpful if the backup was a townie, Peter and Laura. Carol, I don't know if you count as a townie. I, I, I don't know. I'm just saying. I know Peter counts as a townie.
I've been here longer than Laura, but.
Carol's been here longer than me, so I think she takes precedent there and.
Yeah, I, um, I, I, I think that this is, so first of all, suffice to say that I'm going to follow this pretty closely. I think you all know that. My, you know, how I approach these things. But in terms of being a designated backup, I, I think it, you know, either Laura or Carol, I think would be excellent candidates for that. The, the town manager, uh, screening committee is actually going to take up considerably more time than I anticipated. Um, as well as where we are looking to, uh, ramp up capital planning meetings this summer. So I, I, I may be overcommitted already.
Can, can I just say, and this is not to slight Carol, but Carol, you did a lot of work. You gotta let somebody else take the load for a little bit.
I am perfectly okay with that.
Okay, alright.
Bake some of the work.
I, I can do it if you need, um. Yeah, if it's evenings are easier, um, yeah, depending on the time, I can do it.
Well, it's during the day. It had, the problem is during the day if Tony's working.
Yeah, so I can, yeah, so if it's during the, like, school day, I can do that.
Can you do during the summer during the day?
Yeah, I actually have more flexibility for having spouses work from home, I think.
All right, well, I will, uh, entertain a motion that we appoint myself and Laura as designated backup.
So moved.
I will second that.
Ready for roll call? Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbow?
Yes.
Give more?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolbrini?
Yes.
Um, could I make a suggestion too, that when this is relayed? Um, I assume Mr. Layton will relay it, but, or whoever, since maybe Mr. Schoolbrini, since Mr. Layton is. Not available for the next week or so, um, that. It, it'd also be stated that this is important and we want to make sure our voice is going to be there and that's the reason for the alternate. You know, that, that there is an understanding that, that that would be one of the reasons why. That, you know, your, your job is unpredictable. And, um, it should it fall during the day, we have to make sure we have someone available.
I, I'll take care of that. Uh, if, uh, does anybody, can somebody just send me an email with, uh, Renee's email? I just checked my email and I don't have it. It did not auto populate and I just checked my Gmail account.
I will send that to you.
Okay.
Being called a townie is like the best compliment I've gotten in like a long time. Like, yeah, that's awesome.
It's a badge of honor.
I think it is.
Peter talking about his old concussion protocol was like the towniest thing I've ever heard.
How many fingers?
We were fine.
Exactly.
All right, let's, uh, go into action. Are the, uh. The first thing in old business is the fiscal year twenty-four quarterly budget, uh, Dr. Burnham?
So you don't have a, a written quarterly budget report, but we've talked, um, a good bit about it through the line item transfer. Uh, earlier this evening as well as the, um. The vote to, uh, carry over the open POs. Um, if you have any other questions, Dr. Livingston is still on the meeting. But I think he, he gave you a sense of, uh, where we're at with the budget.
Mother, okay, uh, Laura, I, I didn't see who went up first, so I'm going to go in alphabetical order. Uh, Carol.
As this year is coming to a close. Are we, do we know, when will we know? How much money we have left? Do you have a guess?
As I said, the lump sum payroll is being posted tomorrow. We do already have that number. So I've calculated it in. Uh, the final warrant will be on July third. Uh, so certainly, um, you know, I, I'm hoping by, you know. Most towns would have a goal of closing by July fifteenth. You know, I think Ezekiel has that in the back of his mind. If that ever happens, I would be shocked. But I would think we will have that, uh, from the school department by then.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Laura, Brzezinski is very rarely second, so.
Um, I know. Um, is, so is this the end of the Esser funds? The fiscal year, this fiscal year ending means this is the end of any Esser updates and the Esser funds have all been expended?
The, the Esser funds have to be expended by the end of September, but Lunenburg has already committed them by now.
Okay, well then, good job.
Our end is open.
That was an interesting due date, but makes sense, I guess. Um, okay, and when did we expend the last of those funds? That was.
Uh, they're being spent now on salary.
Right now, okay.
Cause all of your funds were spent on salary.
Paul, I have one question. Will it look, does it look like to you, and I'm not holding you to this because I understand that there's so much stuff still up in the air. But does it look like to you that we will have a surplus?
With the encumbrances that you have now, no. I, I don't think we will necessarily meet all of those encumbrances and that's why we're holding some of them. Those encumbrances, I, I, it's weird how you might choose to define the surplus or not. Uh, because if we have some, I know, uh, Kate is looking at those encumbrances very closely to determine. What the priority is and, um, you know, there are some project related things. Facilities relating things that I think would like to get done. Um, so. Yes, a surplus, no, a surplus. It, it really comes down to how you define that.
That is the lawyerliest answer I've ever heard, a superintendent can.
I should, I should have been a lawyer.
All right, uh, is there any other discussion of the FY twenty-four, uh, quarterly budget? All right, uh, the next item on the, um, agenda is the Keystone Collaborative Report.
Yep, you, you have a, a quarterly update for, uh, regarding the Keystone Collaborative in your packet. It's pretty straightforward. Uh, if anybody has any questions, they can email me and, um, I can get information back to them.
And just for the au- audience, what is the Keystone Collaborative?
So it's a specialized collaborative, um, special education programs out of district. Um, that we are a member district of this collaborative. In addition to providing programs, um, that we can send some of our students and place them out of district with the collaborative. We partner with, um, the director of the collaborative, uh, and, and he works with us to, to help. Uh, secure services as best he can. Uh, for some highly specialized, uh, staff supports, um, you know, uh, work with visually impaired students. As an example, we don't have a staff member. Uh, if we had a student who needed that kind of support, we don't have a staff member, uh, as part of our, uh. Uh, employee base here, we might rely on, uh, somebody who is. Uh, employed through the collaborative instead. Um, sometimes, um, you know. They can work to help get us, uh, group rates on, on things as an example. Handful of years ago. We worked through the collaborative for a, a, a program that, um, was called Interface. Uh, that, that connected families with, um. Mental health providers that, that, uh, took their insurance. Um, we got a, a better rate because, uh, we were a group of districts that, that were looking to contract. Um, that was all facilitated by the director of, of the collaborative. So. There are, there are benefits to and resources that are available to us as part of. This collaborative, uh, but the, the. Programming, uh, for students that can't get that programming in their own district.
And so, um, we don't need, we don't need to take a vote on this. This is just.
No, it's just information.
Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna, I, I'm gonna promote us again. This is yet another way in which the district is being resourceful with taxpayer dollars. By participating in the Keystone Collaborative, we can get things for our students who have. Uh, special education needs that we would not necessarily be able to do on our own. And so this is a way of helping defer costs. So, um, thanks for participating and I'm glad to see that the report indicates things are basically steady. It wasn't like anything. The next thing on the agenda is a personnel report, uh, and, uh, this is. Not a fun report to give, but I assume, Dr. Burnham, you're the one that's going to have to deliver the news.
Yep, um, so it's, it's not as, uh, pretty as, uh, Mr. Cassidy's reports used to be. But he used to give them quarterly and we will give them quarterly. Thank you for your patience and understanding that while we've been understaffed in this regard. This is more of a. It's more than a quarter of, of updates on, um, staff transitions. So, uh, you've got a listing of new hires. Again, these are positions that had been posted and open and are now filled. You have a listing of what we're calling separations that, th- those are folks who have left the district. Um, there are a variety of reasons for that. And then, um, I did give you some information, I believe, as well on open positions that, that are currently posted. And we are, um, actively, uh, engaged in processes to fill those positions. And we'll have updates for you, uh, in August or early September. When all of the flurry of, um, hiring that happens every single summer. Settles down. There, there are more separations than would be typical because we did have to cut positions with Esser. But, uh, the, the list is not. It's not, it's not all resignations. It's not all staff who have chosen to take positions elsewhere, retirees. Uh, any, any staff non-renewals for next year. And of course, the budget cuts are in here too. So I, I don't want anybody to think, whoa, that's a really big list. A whole lot of people are leaving, choosing to leave. That, that's not entirely the, the accurate picture there.
I, I will note that the list of new hires is. I, I will note that the list of new hires is eleven people long and the list of separations is forty seven, uh forty eight people, including a principal and an assistant principal, and they're in the same school, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so uh-
Two posted positions too.
So the principal position has not yet been posted. The assistant principal position was posted um as soon as we received notification uh that Mrs. Cutania would not be uh returning with us next year. Uh, we are uh in the final stage of of um hiring for that position. I have been taking a little bit of time to give consideration to how to move forward relative to the open position of the principalship at the primary school. I'm considering options, um, and we'll have more to say about that next week.
Okay, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Because, oh, I mean, I'm considering alternatives to posting and hiring a brand-new out-of-district person for that building because I, I know that I will have to uh fill the social worker position at that building. Uh, that person is key and integral to the day-to-day operation, supporting the administration, working with families, supporting students. Um, that will be a new face in the office complex. Uh, the nurse will be on leave in the fall. Um, we'll have a, if, if things work out, the final candidate that we're looking at will be a brand-new, first-time administrator in the role of assistant principal. So you can see why I'm giving some careful consideration about what I want to do about the vacancy in the principalship at the primary school.
The primary nurse will be out on leave? So we're hiring for Turkey Hill Nurse and we're gonna need a-
We, we have an open position, a vacated position for the nurse at Turkey Hill. We are posting that, we're hiring, we're filling that. We have an employee who is in the nurse position at the primary school who will be on a leave of absence early next year. And again, the nurse is very integral to the work of this, the front office in supporting student absences, you know, um, the comings and goings, dismissals uh for students who are ill, going off on doctor's appointments, so on and so forth, so. Um, it's a lot to have all of those key positions. Really, the only study that you would have at the, at the primary school would be the secretary.
Chrissy Carbone, hi.
I think she'd probably run the school, um, but we're also-
Well, maybe, maybe I'm contemplating making her the principal.
Wondering, like, is Christie gonna, cause I I could see that, um. We're also-
So I, I, I'm considering, I'm considering options there. So the, the principal position has not yet been posted.
Okay, uh, and we're also hiring a social worker at the primary, so we also, yeah, that's a lot of really important roles that are-
Very important roles. And they, they would not have context for the culture of the community, expectations of parents, uh, relationships with the families, relationships with staff. It's a lot. It's a lot. Um, so I, I've been giving that some careful consideration.
Dr. Burnham, uh, the situation at the primary school reminds me of that movie Ki- King Ralph, where the whole royal family got electrocuted and John Goodman was made the King of England. So who is in charge at the primary school?
Well, the school is closed for the year for now.
Let's say somebody needed something out of the primary school.
They can still contact the school. Uh, Chrissy Carboni is still the secretary there. She has access to records. It's not like she, she, she can manage to take care of all of that. Um, I can tell you that um Mr. Adams and Mrs. Cutania worked very hard to get everything set up and ready as best they could for the fall. So basically, a lot of that work has already been done so that whomever comes in over the summer into these roles has a foundation of that, that work that's already been done uh and and ready to open the building. There's still going to be a lot of um onboarding that's gonna have to happen with a whole new team in, in that building. And any way you slice it, whatever options I'm pondering, you will have a whole new team in that building. So, um, I wanna thank Mr. Adams and Mrs. Cutania for the extra work they did in the last short little bit of time, knowing how important it was to have all this stuff ready to go. Uh, so that whomever came into the role uh of the leadership team in that building would be well-positioned uh to transition and hit the ground running, so.
And Dr. Burnham, one last question. The, i- if you were to diagnose the reason why there are departures that are not related to retirements or non-renewals, it's salary.
Um-
Correct?
M- more so than it's ever been.
Okay.
Um, that is not a reason that I used to hear. Um, the, the primary reasons that I used to hear were it's closer to home. I've recently had children. I'm trying to cut my commute so I have more time with my family. Um, it's a job, my dream job in my home community, i- those sorts of things, or people pursuing different career paths, moving into administration. Transitioning into a different kind of role where there was not gonna be an opportunity for them in the district. But more and more, uh, the conversations that we're having relative to folks exiting the district, it, it is related to, to pay. And, and that's, you know, i- it's also compounded, uh, I think by the fact that we spent so many months since October, November, talking about the massive cuts that were coming. And we've talked publicly about how the override satisfies next year, but beyond next year, we're uncertain again. So when people hear that, they start exploring opportunities. They start applying for positions. And then when they're offered positions and it's a good pay increase, they're taking it rather than wait and see and take their chances whether or not they'll be on the cut list again next year. So part of this exodus initiated because of the climate that, that they've been living under for the last, you know, six-plus months, which is to be expected. A- and I said that back in October, that we would see an exodus from the district because people would feel uneasy if, if their job, if they did not perceive that their, their position uh was secure in the district. Um, and we're seeing exactly what I said, that, like I said, that the compounding factor is that people who have explored have found that there's better salary out there and they are going.
Well, um, I appreciate you diagnosing the problem. Um, is there anything that anybody else wants to say about the personnel report?
How many maintenance people are we up to now?
Um, maintenance at this point, I think we have three positions filled. Um, I can't even tell you right now how many uh technically open positions in the custodial ranks because that seems to be a very fluid situation. Um, it changes uh week to week. So, um, I, I do know that we still have open positions in the custodial staff as well.
Okay.
I- it's as action. Do you need us to do anything on this?
Um, just, you can- Um, I think this one, no, this one was just discussion. The next item is action.
All right, well, Peter has to go at nine o'clock, so let's do that one really quick so that he can vote, cause otherwise, do we lose quorum if Peter goes?
We do not.
Okay, all right. Let's see if we can still do it with Peter here.
Okay, so the next item is the class accounts. What you have is an update. There are notes updating uh progress being made with each of the classes that still had um money in their accounts. At this point, um, I think you can table this. Um, and we will continue to have communication with, with the folks who are in process uh trying to uh get things ready so that they can request and transfer their, their class funds. You can table this and we can put it on an agenda again in the fall. Um, and, and hopefully we have some, some more progress to report and we can actually vote to either allow classes to take their, their funds or close out others.
Uh, does anybody object if we just um table that and put it on for next year?
No, do we need to motion to table it?
Please.
Okay, I move that we table the class account discussion until a further later date.
I can second that.
Roll call. Uh, Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
To be of more.
Yes.
This is Ashambo.
Yes.
And Mr. Schoolmbrini.
Yes.
I just wanna say one other thing. I wanna thank Liz for all the time she put in on trying to clear these up. This wasn't easy. I grabbed a few, but she got the rest. So that, that, that was a tough job.
Yep, she's pretty extraordinary.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I might make her the principal of the primary school.
There you go.
That's funny. Uh, next item on the budget is uh second public comment. The person that has had their hand raised since the very beginning, I'm not sure if this is a real person or if it is a blinker that forgot to be turned off after the turn was made, but if you wanna talk, now's the time. Is there anybody else who wants to make a public comment?
Are you there?
Yes. Yes, Galaxy Tab, I'm assuming that's not your name.
My name is Dave Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, how are you? Mr. Rogers, you have three minutes. Mr. Rogers?
I don't think he, he's unmuted, but I don't see him talking.
Well, um, does anybody have an objection that if Mr. Rogers comes back in before we adjourn, that we'll just use that as public comment? Cause he did say-
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're, you're, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, uh, when will we on uh, uh, the finance director, um, the specificity of the, the situation, who is it? Where are they coming from? How much money we're gonna be paying them? Ba 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 ba. That's point number one. Uh, point number two, I have a, a real question about the re- reorganization of the uh school committee uh with specific regard uh to the uh, the chair uh of the, of the school committee, uh, who, by the way, uh, I have a high regard for, but I understand that, that he is, I think it's correct, that, that he is a, a uh member of the uh bargaining committee where he teaches. In fact, he might even be the president of the, of the uh union, uh, and if, and if, and if that's the case, then I, I'd just like an explanation. How, how can he be sitting on the school committee in Lunenburg and a member of uh the um, uh, the union? Uh, the last question I have is with specific regard to Dr. Livingston and DeLeo, um, who really i- impressed me. Uh, how long will they be associated with the school? How much are we paying them? What's the financial implication here? And just a, a general uh outline of that. If I could get some uh update on that, I'd be, uh, be pleased. Thank you so much.
Just quickly, and I know this is not question and answer, but I, I wanted to make sure that this was clear to people who are watching and to Mr. Rogers. The issue about Brian being a union member was brought up at the last meeting. Uh, it was discussed. I think the understanding that he is the president of the union is not correct. And so, um, the rules have always been, and my understanding is it's done this way in other states as well, having practiced in New Hampshire and, and represented m- unions in New Hampshire, that as long as you are not a member of the union in that school district, you can still be a member of the school committee. Um, the other questions about the finance director, I know that decision was made in the spring and in terms of the pay. Dr. uh Burnham, uh, can, would you be able to provide that information so that we could, you know, like have a, a list or an email so that if we have this come up at the next meeting, we can just say, here's this information. I, I don't remember exactly when she was hired. Um, and I don't remember exactly what her salary was, but we had a discussion. And the same thing with uh DeLeo and Livingston.
So I'm not sure that, was there a question relative to our new finance director that we hired? Because I thought that the question was related to the service that we have contracted.
Three questions. The first one, my understanding was about who's the finance director, when she was hired and how much she's making. My, the second was about the chair, who he held in high regard, but was concerned about his membership in the union and whether or not he was the president of the union of the school he was at. And then the third question was, uh, he was impressed with Mr. DeLeo or uh Dr. DeLeo and uh Dr. Livingston, and he wanted to know how long they were gonna stay on and how much they were gonna be paid. And I know to take precise notes because Mr. Rogers' questions are always precise.
Okay, well then we'll start with uh the financial services that we've contracted, uh, Dr. Livingston and Dr. DeLeo. They are part of uh a, a group called TMS. Uh, we posted, uh, requested uh, uh, quotes for this service back in January when our first hired candidate to fill the vacant position of finance director was, was backing out of, of her uh appointment here. Um, we posted and um awarded the contract to TMS for the months uh to begin uh February first through June thirtieth. Believe it was approximately thirty-one thousand uh for their services in supporting us in our finance office. Um, relative to how long will they be staying on? Uh, that has not yet been determined, but I've been having conversations with the president of TMS relative to a two-month uh guaranteed transition, potentially a third month, depending on how things go. And I've asked that they uh stay on to complete the end-of-year report for FY twenty-four, since they now know all the ins and outs of where all of our budget lines fell. Um, it, it'd be a much easier task for them to take on than a brand-new uh director coming in July first. So, um, uh, none of that has been decided at this point. I haven't uh gotten any uh contract or p- proposals for their continuation. As I said, their, their service was due to end uh June thirtieth. Um, but it's my intention that we'll keep them on through the transition to help facilitate that transition, since there's been still so much uh if backlog to be, to be done even at town hall. Relative to the hiring, um, she is due to begin uh next week. Her contract starts July one. It's a three-year contract. And next year, she will be making one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
One, one last budget question, if I could. I, I saw a spreadsheet and the last two years of, of uh your uh-
I I saw a spreadsheet and the last two years of of uh your um situation. Um superintendent is that they they were uh. Vacant and it says TBD, which means, I think, to be determined. What's the status of that?
So I'm assuming that you're talking about the salary for the last two years of my contract?
Exactly.
Um it it's budgeted. My my salary is in the FY twenty-five budget. It will be exactly the same as it was in FY twenty-four.
Doctor Burnham took. Doctor Burnham took no raise last, this this next year.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, um is there anybody else that wants to make a comment? I am glad that the first time I was running the the meeting. Mr. Rogers' comments, his comments are always challenging, and I'm grateful for it, so. Uh let's see, we have one last agenda item. So.
If I could, Mr. Chair. For public comment, that is the next um item. I I did have those school committee questions that I wanted to uh go through. Very, very quickly. So one of the questions was uh requesting a a running list of staff. Again, that's a quarterly budget report, a personnel report. We will get back to those quarterly reports. You had one this evening. Um there was a request to reexamine our policy as it pertains to school bus hiring. Uh and drivers. We do not have any part of hiring the school bus drivers. Uh the bus company is responsible. For hiring and training all of the bus drivers, uh including record checks for all of those employees. Um so that is not our our purview. Um there was uh some reference along with the question to. Um a a problem, incident, uh bus driver. Um and the way they handled a student. We do, uh. That is a very infrequent event that happens, um but occasionally. We provide specialized training for bus drivers when we have students that have behavioral challenges. We are. BCBAs will provide training for the the drivers so that they have some better strategies. And how to more effectively deal with that individual student based on what we know of the student and what works well for the student. Relative to the budget, there was a question as to whether or not um my attendance at the superintendent's conference in July. Was budgeted. There is money in the budget. There was a question relative to would the middle school continue to use iReady? Um yeah, that's sort of a a curriculum question as well. That's an ongoing discussion internally. With teachers, administrators, and the curriculum leaders, um but that money is in the budget. Uh there was a question as to whether or not we would be dropping iXL, the platform. Because we did drop it as part of a needs-based budget. It is still budgeted, however. W- we'll be taking a look at that um as well, but uh since we have the funding for it. We will likely be looking to keep that at the middle school and high school uh for next year. The a question about the uh cost for Class Dojo, there is no cost to us. A question about outsourcing landscaping and what do they do and why can't we do it ourselves? Um whether or not we can cost share on this with the town. When we solicit bids, we we request quotes on this. Um it's not uh such a high uh price contract that. It needs elaborate uh uh bidding process, however. The the landscapers that we contract specifically, and we talked about this during the budget. Specifically take care of our playing fields. That's all they do. And we contract that out because the playing fields are supposed to be maintained at a certain level for different sports. And it's much easier for for an outsource to handle just that piece of it, so. In that regard, that that's why we're not doing it ourselves. We don't have the time. To to dedicate that level of attention to the playing surfaces. Um and it really is not an appropriate cost share uh with the town. And um a question as to whether or not it was uh we felt it was a reasonable uh price when we bid. And um we do. They they do this work for us in the fall as well as in the spring. Who's paying for the electricity usage uh that comes at um the hands of the food pantry at TCP? That is not a school department um program and the school department budget. Um nor any of our uh revolving accounts uh fund. Or pay for the electric bill that comes with the food pantry. Um there were many questions relative to sort of day-to-day operation, relative to facilities. Who's responsible for booking, the use of TCP, who carries the liability insurance? Um that's the town's, the the space is booked uh through the town facilities department. And the town has the liability. Uh is the food pantry part of the school side of things or is it a town? Um the food pantry is not in any way connected to the school department programming. Um are we cleaning the food pantry with our custodians? Our custodian, who was a part-time custodian at TCP. Does clean the whole building, all of the areas that are used. Currently, our part-time custodian at TCP has been reassigned. Over to the middle high school because we are so short-staffed at the middle high school. Um so currently, there is no custodian at TCP. Um who's taking care of the lawn out in front of TCP and to the side of the building? That is our school department maintenance and grounds team that takes care of that. And we also take care of and maintain, maintain, repair the uh Kids Kingdom playground as well. There was a question around TCP bathrooms, um no running water. Concerned that staff also had this concern. Um I was not made aware by any staff in the building that there was not running water in in the bathrooms that were being used. Either by our students or our staff. That said. This is a town facility. There is a town facility department. They would be responsible for it, but I can tell you that what. What our maintenance folks are taking a quick look at is that there are sensors in the faucets. The all water automatically comes on when the hands are in the right position. Sometimes the batteries die. And it's a battery replacement that needs to happen, so we're we're taking a quick look at that to see if that's um the situation. There were questions relative to data.
Bathroom yet? Is there running water in those bathrooms yet?
I have not, I have not looked at that. We do not have any students in in the building at this point. Either for extended day or for ACE program, and I'm not hearing this as an issue with. With the staff that work in the building. There's another category of day-to-day that I'll kind of put with uh scheduling and. To some extent curriculum, um relative to parent complaints about library usage. Um and that one parent has had conversations with Mr. Santry. This is where I will remind the the school committee and parents who might be watching uh this meeting now. Or at some point in the future. Please refer parents to the chain of communication. If a parent has an issue, they need to start with the the person who has the authority closest to the problem. Sometimes that's a classroom teacher. In this case, Mr. Santry. When people are not satisfied with what they're hearing from that level, they need to move to the next level. The next level in this case is me, not the school committee. So we have an a whole document that outlines the kinds of questions or problems. That parents may have and who they should start with and who is next, who's next, who's next? So please encourage people that bring concerns to you to go back through the chain of communication. And they really do need to speak to me before they get to you. Unless, of course, they have spoken to me and they're not happy with something that I have responded for them. How often does each grade visit the library? Um I can tell you that I know for sure that there's one ELA teacher of the sixth grade that takes her class several times during the week. Are there high school students using the library? Yes, high school students are in the library all the time. Uh that's likely due to the proximity of to the of the library to the high school wing of the building. Um additionally, students at the high school level have a little bit more flexibility um uh to go in during. Uh study periods or uh advisory blocks and so on and so forth. Um how are we utilizing the library? For the middle school, the library is used to teach one middle school enrichment uh rotation for the seventh grade. It's also a space where um developmental design. Uh for the middle school, uh those those classes meet there. Um the high school advisories meet there. Um and high school teachers will often take classes down to the library to conduct research and work on other projects. Do we keep the library open uh for accreditation purposes? Um it's a factor for sure, but it it's not the sole reason that we keep a library open. Is there a reason it's not being used regularly for the middle school? That really comes down to a scheduling. Structure inside the high school. That's something certainly that the high school administration can take a look at, and they can revisit the schedule. Uh and potentially look to increase classes' rotation down to the library. There were questions relative to curriculum implementation. Again, this is kind of an operations uh question. Uh the library issue ties back to a common complaint about uh from parents about Amplify and the lack of physical books. Um again, we've we've addressed this a couple of times. Um we do have physical books. We do, and they are available for use at the grade level. We also have paper editions of Amplify materials as well. So it's not all necessarily strictly limited to screen. I want to remind everyone, this was the first year of implementation of a brand-new curriculum. We have, just like we did with the implementation at the K-five level. We worked with teachers, we common planned time with teachers. We mapped out the execution of the curriculum for this year. We asked people to execute with some fidelity. So that they all had common experience for the students, but also common experience as teachers with the curriculum. And this is how curriculum works all the time. They will now revisit the experience of the first year of implementation. From their lens and what worked and what didn't work, as well as their perspective. And what they heard from students as to what worked well for students and what didn't work well for students. And in year two, they will make adjustments. They will reflect again at the end of year two. They will make adjustments again in year three, just like the K-to-five is doing again. There will be more adjustments in year three implementation of the curriculum. It's the nature of curriculum. It is in constant reflection, revision. Execution, reflection, revision, execution, so. There's there's some misunderstanding, I think, around this curriculum. Um it is not strictly an online curriculum, and I want to remind everyone, we went through a process. And teachers piloted different programs and teachers. Teachers unanimously selected this program for implementation, and the school committee approved it. So please, parents, students, school committee members, please be patient. It's a process. It's a cycle that teachers and curriculum leaders go through all the time. This is the norm. So again, it's a work in progress. Day-to-day operations relative to communication, the word commencement was spelled wrong. Uh I I understand that this is mortifying. Um there's a perception that this conveys. That we maybe are not well-equipped to educate the children of Lunenburg. This was a typo. It was a mistake. It was a mistake that was caught corrected. The publisher, the the print did not send a proof back. Had the proof come back before they were all printed, it would have been caught and corrected. This was an honest mistake. And I just want to call to people's attention. You've got. Limited staff here. Wearing multiple hats during very busy times of the year. People who are working well beyond their normal eight-hour workday. When people are trying to meet deadlines, working overtime. Mistakes are gonna happen. The staffer who did not catch this has apologized. I'm I'm not sure what more as the the primary leader of this district. That you would want me to do in a situation where somebody made a mistake that was not caught. Um relative to emails and new newsletters with attachments and links and how that's, you know, not ideal. We have already addressed this as well. There are some limitations with School Messenger and the ways in which this platform can work. I do think it's still better than a re- a very lengthy email, and we do, even with School Messenger Messenger, have a limitation on how long an email can be. So while this may not be ideal and preferred for everyone. We don't seem to have as many concerns about lack of communication as we maybe once did when I first got into the district. There's not going to be any any mode of communication, any one platform, that is going to be. Perfectly matched to meet the preferences of the recipients of the information. There's nothing that we can individualize to that level at this time. We're always on the lookout for something that's better, but but there are limitations with what we work with currently. So it's not that that feedback hasn't been heard. We have limitations. Um there was a question relative to curriculum and the Lunenburg Cultural Council. Um apparently, they were before the Select Board a week ago promoting an upcoming fundraiser. For continuing the school programming that was funded this past year through APA money. That was that Artist in Residence Program. Um I was asked to provide background that might help. The committee understand the nature of of the relationship with the council. Um and how we are engaged um with respect to fundraising and any curriculum involvement. We, as the school department, have not been involved in any ongoing conversations uh about fundraising. About long-term continuation of the program. We do know that they did have remaining funds, and there are two artists that are booked. To come in in the fall. Um so if there are plans for fundraisers and and maintaining this program more long-term. We have not been part of that conversation to this point. Um I will say, though, that I um was contacted by Mr. Emke. Who's a member of a newly-formed artist group on Hickory Hills Lake. Um and he came to meet with me because that group. Was aware of the budget discussion over the last many months, and um they have in the past. Uh donated their own art pieces for auction as a fundraiser. This year, they're talking about doing um a similar uh event potentially in the winter. And they would like for some of the proceeds of that auction to go back to the schools for art. Um but they would like to know how we would like to utilize the funds. So I have already had some outreach to our um art teachers to get their thoughts on. If there was a donation of funds that was to be earmarked for art. What are some of the ways in which they might like to use that? And I'll get that information back to Mr. Emke that he can carry back to this group. Um we will not be um in involved in the event itself. Uh we, at this time, anyway, we're we're just a very lucky recipient of some of the funds that will be raised. At this time, anyway, we're just a very lucky recipient of some of the funds that will be raised. There was another question relative to the academic purpose of the library. And we can tell you that it is a quiet place to read, study for exams, get homework completed, take numerous high-stake exams like PSATs, AP exams, MCAS exams. And it's also a place where research classes are taught at the middle school level, as well as high school teachers taking their students down to learn how to do research as well. There were a couple of other things that were more confidential that I can't really address in a public comment. But I thought, you know, these questions, rather than information going back to one member, this general information, these questions and responses might be beneficial for all members to have. So thank you for affording me the time at the end of the meeting to rattle through some of the questions and the responses and information that's provided. Hopefully, it's helpful. Thank you very much.
Dr. Burnham, thank you for responding in a lightning round fashion to questions, some of which were very important, some of which were not so important. I'm just going to be candid. I think the spelling error is something everybody that does things can relate to. Is there anything else we need to do? I think we have reports. Does anybody have a report they want to go through and talk about? Or recognizing that it's 9:26 and we have an executive session? Do we want to just move quickly?
We can put the report off. It's just the FinCom report. Up to you.
I would prefer to move quickly.
All right.
All right. At this point, we have completed the agenda. And I am looking, oh, wait, topics for future discussion. Anybody have anything they want to put on an agenda for later?
I would just say that we need to put the the discussion of finance, the workshop for a later meeting. But other than that.
So that's already in the works. I sent an email requesting school committee members give me their availability July and August so that I can work with the team that will come in and provide that workshop for you. As soon as I have dates that work for everybody, I'll offer those to the consultants so that they can let me know what they can make work, and we'll post that meeting.
Eventually, not now, but probably sometime next year. I'd like to put on the agenda us taking a look at the use of cell phones, students using cell phones in schools. And I mentioned this because of an interview I'd seen with a gentleman named Jonathan Hite, who wrote a book called The Anxious Generation. I'm not 100% convinced it's pure moral panic. I mean, we get this every 20 years when something new happens. But I'd at least like to have a discussion with educators about it and talk to people. But that's it. Laura, you have anything you want to put on an agenda for later?
No.
All right. At this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to executive session and, or, and then adjourn to enter executive session and then adjourn after.
Second motion.
We'll call Mrs. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Ms. Ashenbo.
Yes.
And Mr. Skombry.
Yes.
Thank you all.
My intent was not to call out the person who made the spelling mistake publicly. I didn't want to. I just wanted to know going forward what we could change so next year we don't end up with this again. Because I talked to-